I call to order the November 6, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. All to rise for the pledge. Thank you so much. Take a roll.
Raffas?
Here.
Kaluza?
Here.
Zimmer?
Here.
Ink?
Here.
Swaini?
Here.
Swenson?
Here.
All present and accounted for. Approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the October 16 Planning Commission minutes? Have been presented to us. I will ask if our Planning Manager, if we have any announcements today?
Not this evening, Chair Zimmer, thank you.
Glad that your microphone's working. Agenda number five is a public hearing, considering the application of Andy Strobin for a conditional use permit to allow the combination of accessory buildings to exceed of the principal structure at 16415 Klamath Trail. Ask Mr. Strobin to come up and give us a little presentation. Then we will go to staff and see if there's anything to comment. Please come forward and welcome. Yes, please, identify yourself for the record.
I'm Andy Strobin, I live at 16415 Klamath Trail. Yeah, I'd submitted an application to build an accessory building that exceeds the total allowable square footage larger than the primary structure on the property, just for personal use. It's a kind of a unique lot, it's a very large lot, it's eleven and a half acres, heavily wooded, you can't even see the, you could barely see the house and you won't really be able to see the building at all from any road or any neighbor, so.
I'll agree with you there, because I drove up that road today to try to find it.
Yup.
Okay, great, thank you, we'll bring up staff and then go from there.
Thank you.
Evening, Chair, Commission members. Request in front of you tonight is for the property located on Klamath Trail on the north side, it is zoned rural agricultural, and it is 11.49 acres as the property owner mentioned. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a detached accessory building that is greater than the gross floor area of the principal structure. So code states that the combination of accessory buildings and garages shall not exceed either the area limitations or the total gross floor area of the principal structure, whichever is least. So the total allowable combined accessory building areas for the RA District is actually 8,712 square feet, but according to Dakota County GIS, the applicant's finished square footage of the home is 2,840 square feet. So combined, the applicant is proposing a 3,500 gross square foot accessory building for the detached one, plus he has a 1,485 square foot attached building. So total, there'd be about 5,000 square feet of accessory building space. Though the proposed structure, though, does meet setbacks, way exceeds the setback requirements.
Ms. Button, could you just pause for a moment? If you're coming into the hearing, please come in and sit down so we can continue? And sit down quietly, thank you. Please go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. Okay, so the building meets and exceeds all requirements for setbacks. If you see on the bottom right of your screen, this is the area that the building is going to be located, it's over 250 feet away from the property lines. The applicant has stated that the structure would be for his own personal use, and a home occupation or any storage related to a home business would not be allowed to be in the building. The staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the six stipulations listed in your packet, along with the findings of fact. So, thank you.
This is a public hearing, and I would take anyone's comments regarding the application of Mr. Strobin for a conditional use permit.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kaluza.
Seeing no one come forward on this agenda item, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Raffas?
A question, I think most appropriate for Ms. Button. There was a mention in the materials, the property includes stand and mature trees, it will not be greatly impacted by the site grading. Was the city forester involved in this, or was the tree preservation policy referred to?
Nope, for not this case, it did not trigger the review of the tree preservation ordinance for what is being proposed and the amount of trees being removed. There is an existing structure there that is 800 square feet already that will be demoed and then kind of put in the same place. Obviously, a little bit bigger.
Yeah, because I, you know, I also got the chance to see the property, but you know, just from the end of the driveway, I didn't drive up the driveway, but lots of mature trees, eleven and a half acres, which is more than a single acre, on the west side of I-35, it just seemed like the type of property that we would apply the policy with. But you're saying since it's replacing an existing structure and...
I will have our forester take a look at it, but I didn't, so far I haven't heard any comments that that would be triggered with this request. But I can have that, the forester, look at it prior to council.
Yeah, sure, that would be great.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Now that'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair. I motion to recommend to City Council the approval of the conditional use permit to allow the combination of accessory buildings to exceed the gross floor area of the principal structure in the RA Rural Agricultural District, and approval of the findings of fact dated November 6, 2025, subject to the six stipulations listed in the planning memo dated October 30, 2025. Second.
Having a motion and a second, I would ask Ms. Erickson to please take the roll.
Raffas?
Aye.
Kaluza?
Aye.
Zimmer?
Aye.
Ink?
Aye.
Swaini?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Tinsley?
Aye.
All those, having everyone in favor, we thank you, Mr. Strobin, sorry for mispronouncing your name, for coming here and look forward to having you develop your CUP. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of the application of Muslim American Society of Minnesota for a conditional use permit to allow a religious institution within an existing building in the OR Office Residential Transition District located at 867210th Street. We'll first ask Neeb, Muneeb Ahmed, please come forward and present, and then we will have staff, after that we'll have a public hearing. Please go ahead, identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, my name is Muneeb Ahmed, and I live at 16097 Canard Court, Lakeville, Minnesota, 55044.
Thank you.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners, my name is Muneeb Ahmed, and I'm resident of Lakeville for past seven years. I'm here on behalf of Muslim American Society of Minnesota and Lakeville Muslim Community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We are here to request approval for conditional use permit for Lakeville Masjid, a place for worship that will serve local families and contribute positively to the city we all call home. Our community has been part of Lakeville for many years. We are professionals, parents, students, and above all, your neighbors. The Masjid will not only be space for prayer, but also for community service and interfaith engagement. We have carefully planned the project to meet all city requirements, from parking to, from parking and traffic to landscaping and safety, ensuring it fits harmoniously within the neighborhood. We deeply value Lakeville's inclusive spirit, and our goal is to continuously building on that by creating a welcoming space for all. Thank you so much for your time and considering this important step for our community, thank you so much.
Thank you, we'll now ask staff to come up. This is a presentation. Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
Good evening Commissioners, as we've said, this is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a religious institution use within the OR Office Residential Transition District. On your left in the map above is a site location map showing, and it appears we have a bug on the screen, the location of the existing building, it is on the south side of 210th Street, just east of Holyoke Avenue. It was previously the school district 194's office building a number of years ago, and then after that it was sold and used as a family therapy clinic for several years. As I said, it is in the OR Office Residential Transition District, and religious institution uses are allowed by conditional use permit. The building is a two-story building, just over 5,200 square feet, and the site does include 75 parking spaces. The primary prayer service is on Fridays at 12 noon and 1:30 PM, each is about 40 minutes. The neighborhood has multifamily buildings, single-family homes, and public ice rinks to the south. In relation to those public ice rinks, the city does have an easement with the property owner for shared parking, 31 of those spaces are available for the rinks use. Keep in mind that the primary time for those rinks use is in the evenings and the weekends per the Parks Department, when those rinks are open with ice, that is typically late December through mid-February if they're lucky. Those rinks are also available in the off-season for off-leash dog areas, so those are available for that as well. I did receive a call from an adjoining property owner with a question about whether the site would have an outside speaker for the call to prayer. In speaking with the applicant, he said that is not something that they utilize, the call to prayer does happen within the building and does not happen outside, and they have no plans to add that. This is the floor plan for the lower level, which is where the prayer rooms would be located. I do need to correct some numbers that were within my staff report. The men's prayer room has space for 92 rug spaces, I, my report erroneously said 135, which is the occupancy of the building by area, but with the rug layout that would be limited to the 92 spaces. And then the same for the women's room, there would be 51 rug spaces and not 81 that was indicated in my report, which makes the total gathering space capacity 143 and not the 216. Parking requirement for religious institution uses is one parking space per three seats or areas of the main congregation area, so for this case we took the two prayer rooms and to calculate that parking requirement, which in this case would be 48 spaces, again there are 75 provided on the site. I did want to note one other thing, the narrative that was submitted included some information about a shared parking agreement or arrangement with an adjoining religious institutional facility. Someone from that organization did contact me, they said they have granted the ability for parking on an occasion in the past, but that there is no formal agreement in place. It should not impact the, our staff's recommendation of this, because the site does have sufficient parking, is not short on parking in the area. Community Development Staff does recommend approval of the CUP, subject to the six stipulations that were included within the staff report, as well as the approval of the findings of fact, which were dated November 6, 2025, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jensen. This is a public hearing, and I don't know if there's anybody that has signed up on the sign-up sheet to speak. One moment. I'm hopeful that not everyone wants to speak. If we have multiple people that want to speak, we'll have to put time limits on it and work from it that way. But when you come forward, then please speak into the microphone and give your name and address, and try to keep your remarks limited. Thank you. Welcome, please give us your name and address.
My name is Maryam Abu Bakr, and I live at 20849 India Circle, Lakeville, Minnesota, 55044.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Maryam Abu Bakr, and I live at 20849 India Circle, Lakeville, Minnesota. I am here to request a conditional use permit for our proposed masjid in downtown Lakeville. This space will provide a welcoming place for Muslims to worship, learn, and come together as a community. Right now, many families travel long distance to attend prayers, and having a local masjid would make a big difference for us. Our congregation has outgrown our current location, and we are excited to create a permanent home here. We are committed to being good neighbors and plan to hold prayers, educational programs, and community events with respect and care for everyone around us. In closing, I respectfully ask for your support. This project is about more than worship, it's about building community and connecting here in Lakeville. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. We have another speaker, again, please identify yourself and your address.
My name is Saif Ali, and I am from 16771 Jacksonville Court.
Q.
Good evening Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. This mosque would be an essential foundation for nurturing the growing Muslim community here in Lakeville, which has never had a place of worship close or convenient to them. With the establishment of this mosque, Muslims would be encouraged to come together and connect with a community of like-minded people, all while strengthening their faith. It would provide a welcoming environment for children and teens to learn, grow, and engage in activities with peers who share their values, fostering a sense of belonging within the community. Youth groups could thrive organizing food drives, community cleanups, and group picnics. Friendships and connections can be formed through the congregation of people every Friday for prayer. In so many ways, this mosque could serve as a cornerstone for both the Muslim and broader Lakeville community. I've lived here almost all my life, since 2010, and growing up here, I've seen how places of worship strengthen neighborhoods. Churches, temples, and other houses of faith contribute immensely to the social fabric of our city. The Lakeville Masjid will do the same, offering community service programs, youth development opportunities, and interfaith engagement that enriches everyone's lives. This is about making Lakeville more inclusive, more connected, and more reflective of the people who live here. I also want to emphasize that the Muslim community is deeply committed to being a positive, contributing part of Lakeville. We value peace, respect, and service, principles that align perfectly with what this city stands for. We're not asking for special treatment, we're simply asking for the chance to worship and serve our city just like others do. In closing, I ask you to please support the conditional use permit for the Lakeville Masjid. Approving this permit would not just allow a building to be constructed, it would affirm Lakeville's commitment to diversity, unity, and mutual respect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Another speaker? I think, yes, please bring the microphone down.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Asha Ali, I live on 775183rd Street West, Lakeville, Minnesota. I am 12 years old, and I've lived in Lakeville almost all of my life. We used to go to the Rosemount Masjid, but it was too far away and it took too much to drive. I'm also taking educational classes at the Lakeville Masjid, so it makes sense to have a mosque here where I live. I am representing the youth from the Lakeville Masjid, and I think that we have a good community of friends through the masjid. Having a masjid community near where I live is amazing, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Excellent job on the brief of your testimony. Do you have any idea how many more there are?
Oh, I think a couple more.
Couple more? Please begin, sir.
Yeah, my name is Sharafa Ali, and I live at Jacksonville Court, Lakeville, MN 55044.
One moment, could you bring the microphone back up so we can hear you? Thank you.
My name is Sharafa Ali, and I live in Lakeville for the last 15 years. And I'm here to express, express my strong support for the conditional use permit of the proposed masjid. I'm also a business owner, and I run a retail business in Mall of America, and I've been working there for the last 15 years. As a business community, we are very excited and welcoming this institution, because this institution is not only helping, helping the Muslims for the worship, but it's a learning place, and it also engages the community, and it also contributes positively to the city's cultural and social life as well. And this institution will strengthen the growth of the city by serving as a place of worship, learning, and community engagement. It will contribute positively to Lakeville's culture and social life. As members of the Muslim business community, we are committed to being good neighbors and active partners in Lakeville city's progress and success. On behalf of Lakeville Muslim Business Community, I respectfully urge your approval for the permit to help build stronger, vibrant, and well-connected community for everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello Commissioners, my name is Mohammed...
Welcome the next speaker, and try to have everybody, if you have something new to add for your discussion points, that's great, but we do need to keep getting through to have a discussion amongst the Commissioners, thank you.
My name is Mohammed Shamsun Isra, I live at 768227th Street, Lakeville, here in Lakeville. I'm a software engineer by profession. I request you to approve this, approve this permit, it will be essential for myself and my, my family. We used to go to either Burnsville or Rosemount to get a similar educational and religious service. I again thank you to, for your, for the opportunity to listen to our request, and I again kindly ask you to request the, to approve the permit, thank you.
Thank you so much.
At 20675 Hollands Avenue West, I also have a property just block north of the Persage Building, and all I'm asking is if we could make a delay on the vote itself. I got this four days ago, that said there was a public hearing tonight, and a lot of my neighbors never got anything, and I just think we should wait on your vote until we get in, as neighbors and part of, you know, in the back, get a more of a chance to look at what this really means for our neighborhood. And that's all I'm asking, because like I say, we just got this, it just just came up to us like in the last three, four days, we got this, so there's no, that's why there's, as you see, they got a lot, but we have no representation of our neighborhood and the property owners around it, so that's all I'm asking is just to give us a little time to take more of a look at it and, and come back to you, so, that's all.
Thank you. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, I am Jamal Said, and I live at 18327 Ironstone Way, Lakeville. I have been living here for 14 years, in Minnesota 30 years. So one of the biggest challenges that we have, or I have, living in Minnesota is that every day I have to drive 30 miles or 25 miles, long way from here. I have two kids going to the Lakeville North and Century Middle, Century Eastview Elementary, so that's a huge challenge for me in winter and summertime to commute, to go for the prayer, simple, you know, five, seven minutes prayer. So having this mosque, giving us permission would give us a huge plus to attract people like us to live here and expand the community and the connection and the business opportunities in future, that's all I want to share, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening Chair and Commission Members, the reason that I address you this evening is to bring clarity to the Muslim American Society of Minnesota conditional use permit that I read. My name is...
Could I ask you to please identify yourself for the record?
My name is Jeff Rich, I'm senior pastor at Grace Community Bible Church, a Lakeville that, we have the neighboring church that is mentioned on page nine of the conditional use permit application before you today. The wording which needs clarification is this, quotes, overflow parking arrangements secured with a neighboring church. And when I, when I read that, I'm just here to clarify, as was said, that no agreement is in place for overflow parking on a regular basis. I, I had coffee, and we did agree for the Muslim American Society to use our parking as an overflow for a specific event a few months ago. I just needed to make sure that that is wordsmith and from that document, so that we have, we have that freedom, of course. We're preaching the gospel of Jesus Christ, that he is the way, the truth, and the life, and no one comes of the Father but through him, so our messages are different. But I assure you that in that different message, you know, we're looking to support the mission of our, of our Lord Jesus Christ, but we also are looking to be good neighbors and good Christians and, and honorable and respectful and continue, continue coffee and courteous professional interactions, and you can expect that as, as your Christian neighbors, but we do want to be careful on the wording of that document, I think that's fair, especially since we didn't enter into that agreement. Thank you Chair and Commission Members for your kind attention to this particular matter.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Another speaker? Please move the microphone down for yourself, that'd be great, thank you.
My name is Maida, and I live at 16097 Canard Court, Lakeville. I am living in Lakeville for the last almost eight years, and I work as a substitute teacher sometimes in the school district and in the neighboring school district as well. I'm raising four kids as well, and they go in this Lakeville School District. My youngest is in the second grade, and oldest is going to UFM. So as a citizen of the Lakeville, I request you, because I need this masjid in Lakeville, I have to travel a lot with the kids, especially during winter, and it's hard for us to go around, you know, find that worship place. And also I want to apologize to the pastor that there was misunderstanding about the parking, and I really apologize for that, it was just a misunderstanding, please consider that, thank you so much.
You. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hello, chairmans. I have so much respect for all of you guys today for hearing us out. I know that this country is a country of opportunity and, you know, a place of accepting everybody.
Will you identify yourself?
My name is Hebo Kanye. I have moved in January this year, and I have five children. And this masjid has been a family, a safe place for all my kids. I know that kids have to be busy, and nowadays, technology is taking over everything, and this place has given us purpose of to worship and to gather and to eat together and celebrate every day. I understand that a lot of people are worried about distance for everything, but then what it comes down to is community, and we have a community in this place. And I would love for us, for you guys, to consider our community, to continue to grow and to be next to each other and to respect. And like I said, I'm very nervous, and I apologize, but I appreciate you guys for hearing us out, and I hope that you gave my children, my five children, the opportunity to grow and stay safe. Not only are my kids, but there are kids, teenagers, that come in every morning, and they get to be taught to stay safe, to respect others, not to do harm. So it's a place for them to stay safe and not to be on drugs. So, and I hope you guys do give us the chance. Thank you.
One else? There's no one else, and we have no one on the phone?
Chair, seeing no one else come forward, I move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. We will turn to Commissioners for questions and ask Ms. Jensen and Chair Ahmed to be
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kalusha.
If Ms. Jensen could maybe talk to us about the notification process and what the requirements are in the ordinance and in the statutes?
Yes. So state law requires notification both published in the city's official newspaper at least 10 days in advance of the public hearing, as well as mailed notification. We are required to mail to all property owners within 350 feet by state law. Lakeville goes above and beyond that. It mails to all property owners within 500 feet. Those postcards for the notice are typically mailed on the Thursday. The newspaper is published Friday, so in this case, the newspaper would have been published October 24, I believe. The postcards would have been mailed October 23. There is, a public hearing is not invalid if someone does not receive a public notice. It is unfortunate if the postcards were not delivered in a more timely manner, but they are mailed well in advance of that notification requirement for those public hearings.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that process? Thank you for reviewing that. Mail service isn't always as reliable as we would like it to be. Sorry, Mr. White. That's what might have happened.
Madam Chair, I have another question for the applicant, if they wouldn't mind coming forward. I just was kind of wondering about holidays. I know that for a number of the other religious institutions in the city, you know, they have varying-sized parking lots, some of them, you know, kind of have them for the, what we call the 100-year parking event, you know, the Black Friday, or in their case, you know, Christmas and Easter. Just if you could maybe familiar, help me understand, you know, do you have any holidays where you would expect a larger turnout than normal? Or like, you know, if you guys are doing like iftar dinners, like if you had a situation where you knew you were going to exceed your parking abilities? I know some of the other religious institutions either get buses or shuttles or something like that. Is that in your plans? Or can you maybe explain to us what, kind of what that yearly cycle is? Are you going to have events that, you know, 500 times more than when you're normal?
I got it. Yeah, so mainly service is on Friday, so we have, we can have multiple sessions for Friday prayer, and that's how we are managing in other places the parking. So I do not anticipate that there will be more parking on Friday service. Other than that, there are two holidays that those are called Eid, so Eidul Fethir and Eidul Adha. So usually what we do, we combine that with neighboring cities, and we rent some place. Like, for example, this year, we rented this arena, Hasi Arena, the new, the open-air one. So we did there. So we definitely don't want to, it's not only a problem for the city and for the neighbors for the road, it's a problem for us as well. We cannot accommodate that many cars, and we don't want to disturb anybody else, as well as it's very hard for us to manage. So for those particular holidays, we actually book a different avenue than we do over there. Yeah, and those are only two days in the year, and we usually rent some other place for that.
Thanks, that's very helpful.
I would have one question, Mr. Ahmed, so, or a couple. When Ms. Jensen talked about the spaces for prayers, so 92 spaces for men and 51 for women and 75 total parking spaces, so if 92 different men come in, 92 different cars, what's your solution for the parking?
So that's where I was saying that we have, we can have multiple sessions for the Friday prayer. So first of all, if that is the case, then if the parking is full, our parking staff will be there. If parking is full, we are not letting anybody enter in the parking. So we will have multiple people in the parking, at least a couple people from get-go. And if there are more, if parking is full, we are not letting in anybody. We are telling them, we will be telling them that they will have to wait for the second prayer, and they can come back. So we do not let even enter anybody, because even if they enter in the property, then they will like to park on the green areas or anywhere, which we don't want. So if there are more than the parking, it does not matter what is the day or what is the event, we will not let any vehicle enter and park over there.
You said staff, so you're going to have off-duty police?
That's volunteers. That's volunteers.
What?
That's our volunteers, volunteer staff.
One of your ideas. So will it be off-duty police, or will it be your staff? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's our staff.
Okay. All right. Other questions? I have another one.
Sure, sure.
When I drove through the lot, and I've used that lot for parking during the Panaprog Parade, which of course is going to be right in front of that building, the whole lineup. So they said in the narrative regarding use by the folks at the arena, or at the rinks, that you didn't think it was going to be crossover based on when your prayers are and when people will use that.
Correct.
So if there are people using the rinks, and they've filled up a number of parking spots, and, you know, hockey and broom ball in Minnesota is a big deal, so, you know, could be a lot of people.
Yeah.
Will you tow people? What will you do with the folks that are there?
So again, the first priority, we will leave the parking, especially in the season of the ice hockey. We will leave those 30 parkings. The majority of those parkings, by the way, are just outside of the rink. So we will leave those. First of all, this situation, I don't think so ever happens. But if it happens, our plan is just to leave those parkings and then just fill the remaining ones. And that's, again, as I said, that our volunteer staff will be there, and we don't, we don't anticipate. We like, by the way, rinks. I mean, they are not only facility for everybody else, this is facility for our children as well. They will also enjoy that. So, yeah, I mean, we do not anticipate any situation where, there will be a situation, you know, we are having parking issues.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Sweeney?
One question, you know, for Ms. Jensen. Has there been a traffic study done for this development and what it would cause? I mean, we're talking about parking, and I can understand that parking might be, you know, one of the issues that crops up from time to time. But what about all the traffic that comes into this downtown area, because it is downtown Lakeville?
No, this is not a situation where we would consider a traffic study necessary. We've had other religious institutions that have built buildings that can accommodate hundreds of people on their site, and we have not required traffic studies for those uses. So this is not a situation where we feel a traffic study is warranted.
Any other questions? No other questions, then take a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Swenson.
Prior to making the motion here, I just wanted to state as well, I think as far as I'm looking at this and considering this, we see plenty of religious institutions come forward, typically that have the same parking requirements in place. Those are the parking requirements that are laid out for us to consider and think about as we're looking at these, and this proposal meets those parking requirements. So from that standpoint, I view this as something that fits within what the city's typical process is for any religious institution, regardless of the religion. So that's how I'm processing this and thinking this through. So from that standpoint, I'll be supportive of this, based on that basis. So with that, if you're ready, I will make a motion.
I think we're ready.
I move to recommend to City Council approval of the conditional use permit to allow a religious institution within an existing building in the OR Office Residential Transition District, and approval of the findings of fact dated November 6, 2025, subject to the six stipulations listing in the planning memo dated October 30, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we'd ask Ms. Erickson to please take the roll. Kalusha?
Aye.
Zimmer?
Aye.
Eink?
Aye.
Sweeney?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Tinsley?
Aye.
Trefus?
Aye.
With that, the motion passes. We don't have clapping. Thank you for your presentation, and we look forward to seeing your development. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
I would ask now for staff notices. Ms. Jensen? I think we'll wait for the group to exit quietly, and then we'll finish the rest of Thank you, Ms. Bodern, and I think I heard your answer, Ms. Jensen. Do we have any staff notices?
No, but the two items that were on tonight's agenda will be forwarded to the November 17 City Council meeting for consideration.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I do note that the next Planning Commission meeting is set for November 20. And do we have a planning memo? Go ahead. You want to, oh, notifying us that it's in here. FYI, okay. Trying to follow all the rules. And seeing nothing else on the agenda?